Good afternoon, this is me in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is January the 16th of 2020. First item that we had on the agenda is a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Edazmo Yariel.
Present.
Jose Teas. Carlos Flores.
Present now.
George Beckelheimer. Raúl Gualde.
Present.
Inarváez.
Present.
Am Lugo. Jorge Romírez.
Present.
For the record, Mr. Sherman, you do have form.
Thank you. I did have communication from Commissioner Teas, Commissioner Beckelheimer, and Lugo. Please excuse them, they are away on business. And we have motions.
A motion?
They have a motion, a second, a more second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
We have the consideration of the minutes of the January 2nd, 2020 meeting. Do you hear a motion? Motion to approve. Or a second?
Second.
And the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item is, do we have any citizens' comments at this point?
Not at the moment.
Thank you. All right, item six. Discussion regarding residential housing in the downtown area, current estimated inventory, current and future demand, and challenges applying the demand. We'll have our planning director give a presentation.
Well, what we've asked is a few staff members to respond. This is a council member, our commission member Flores has wanted to have this discussion, so I'd ask if he wants to lead it. We've brought some guests, the Housing Authority, the Building Department, and we'll answer any questions we can. Just want to note that there is a study that the Housing Authority will speak about probably. Once that's completed, I would like them to come back and present that in full, maybe have a more in-depth conversation. So we don't need to have, isn't it depth of conversation now? If you feel like we need to cover something, there will be a time when we cover in depth.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Can I lay the framework?
Yes.
So I run into a lot of people that find out when I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission, like, why is there no housing downtown? What are we doing about that? Why aren't there people down there living? And I said, you know, honestly, that's a really good question. I'm not really sure. I have some ideas that some of the buildings can't be converted into housing because the cost of getting them into compliance for fire and things like that is one, it potentially cost prohibitive. And really, other than that, I've never really understood why we don't have the development downtown. And so in talking to Kirby, he said, you know, the Housing Authority is working on a study, and we can, we'll be able to discuss that at a later point. And I said, well, you know what, I think it's be important now to bring the issue first to us so that we can understand where we are in terms of what housing exists today, what obstacles are there to housing, if any, today, and really to help frame the point of view for this commission to prepare and do our work so that we're ready when we do get the Housing Authority report, and then see how this commission can play a role in bringing about the development in the downtown area. Because we have a very beautiful downtown, and I guess I'm just at a loss, right? So that's kind of where this began.
Okay. All right, Mr. Binson?
Good evening, my name is Jerry Binson. I'm the building official for the Building Development Services. And I was asked by Mr. Kirby to provide some type of the outlook of downtown area. So I looked at a boundaries between the north and south from Scott to Water Street and from Santa Ursula to Santa Isabel, although I removed the east part and Asta Santa Maria because we know there's residents on the other side, that other side, and we're more interested in this downtown area. So that's pretty much that overview. So what I did find was, we won't really keep information specific to units since we issue up permits for the residents or the site. So I went to look at water meters. And so I found that in that area, in the downtown area that I told you about, between Scott and Water and Santa Ursula, Santa Maria, we have 96 accounts total. Of those accounts, 138 meters make 392 units. And then in the commercial site, there's 13 meters with 38 units. Okay? And certificates of occupancy for that state boundary area, we only had two this last year and one in 2018. So we didn't have anything residential or multifamily really in that area. I mean, I also looked at permits to see if anything, but we don't have it separate to apartment multifamily. And so I, you know, yeah, we have a lot of permits, but that could be commercial, could be remodeling, could be fences and stuff like that. And so it wasn't really a good idea, but in essence, this other one is the one that shows that we really don't have anything going on for residential at this time.
So we have roughly 400 residential units. It's an estimate based on meters that serve residential units. Most of that's multifamily in downtown. And in the last three, four years, we've seen three certificates of occupancy for new residential units. So your assumption that, yeah, there's not, nothing's happening with downtown housing is correct. There is some there that's been there for a while, but we haven't seen anything new really come in. And I would guess, if we went back further, we'd see the same thing, one or two a year for the last several years, one, two, or nothing a year for the last several years. So I asked Jerry to provide that information, that could be our starting point for a short session. I mean, the reason is, why? Why is that the case?
I have a follow-up question for the chairman. Edazmo, in your experience, kind of what have been the historical obstacles, if any at all, or to your knowledge of this?
Well, I think one of them is, like you said, I mean, it's the cost of development. The other one is, remember that downtown areas, or a lot of the areas close by, it's parking also. Sometimes the structures don't have adequate parking, so it's all street parking. Those have been a few of the minor obstacles. I'm not going to say they're major obstacles, because there was always ways that we looked at being able to provide parking, whether through parking garages that a city has established or other means of, you know, things. But I think a lot of it has to do with the cost of the development. And then again, the second phase of that is, okay, how big is my customer base and who is my customer that would, you know, be willing to come and live in the, let's say you develop housing now. The other thing that has to be looked at, that we looked at, I looked at personally probably 25 years ago, is the concept of the downtown area, as you all know, the structures, they were stores, and back then, years and years ago, your deliveries came by truck. So you had to store your merchandise, there was no overnight. And so a lot of these buildings have a second floor and some have a third floor where they used to store their merchandise. We looked at the concept, and we went to Cincinnati, Ohio, to look at a concept of loft apartments over retail stores. And we were looking, we were very close to developing something in the old Cress building. And unfortunately, it fell apart. I mean, there was an issue there with ownership after a while. But I think that a lot of the area, and some areas in the downtown can be looked at. Will we have to do modifications? Yes, it would probably be costly because under the fire code, if you're under, you know, there's recombination, and Ruben can speak to this, most of those, some of those properties are not sprinkled. And they may have to be, and they may not, just depends on the square footages and stuff. But because a good proximity of them are almost, you know, together, that presents a little bit of a headache.
So I think we have to be informed, the Housing Authority, to hear what they have to say.
Good evening, Commissioners. Juan Indivé for the record, Planning and Systems Administrator for the Housing Authority. I don't know if you all are familiar with the inner-city revival campaign that we have at the Housing Authority ongoing. Our summit last year, the Inner City Housing Summit was part of that. We have another one at the end of April this year as well. I know some of you were there. So through this, we're trying to see, find ways to revitalize our inner-city, not just downtown, but inner-city neighborhoods, so basically anything inside the grid system of Laredo. We're doing this work, we found out, you know, there's a gap, right? There's a need for, of course, housing in the inner-city. There is maybe some affordable housing, but it might not be in the best conditions, it might not be quality housing. So we thought it was important to create a study to find different ROIs for developers and stakeholders to be able to utilize this data and see that, you know, why they should invest in the inner-city downtown and inner-city neighborhoods. They're a firm named HRNA. They're based in New York, they have offices in Dallas, they have been here already, they met with several stakeholders, including some elected officials, developers as well. Something that, reason that they told us that they found out that there's, they saw that a lot of people that live in the inner-city actually commute out to the outer-city for work, you know, so that's one thing for, they're looking at, they're looking at different gaps in terms of like incomes, what people in the different income brackets in the inner-city can afford. So I think this is going to help kind of talk a little bit about like who is the market, right? But also, is there another market, like, you know, young professionals maybe that are interested, there's just no supply out there for them. So maybe we can see how we can incentivize that. That's something that we've been doing also through the Inner City Steering Committee, is trying to find ways to incentivize development. So that's, hopefully, a study will give us some of those ideas, that one of the deliverables would be to give us a policy toolkit so that that'll help us maybe look at some incentives that we could implement, you know, together with our stakeholders, the city, to be able to incentivize development in the inner-city downtown Laredo.
So is the, is the study that you guys are working on going to identify what are some of the obstacles for the development? And then is it going to, I guess, provide like proposed policies that the city council can adopt in order to incentivize the development downtown?
That's correct. Some of the work is going to be based on some, what are the obstacles that we face? Some of the work that we've been doing at the Housing Authority, through some construction, development, speaking with our developers, we've identified, you know, already on some obstacles, but, you know, if this would be put in a written report, it might, you know, hold more teeth. So that is one thing. And then also that policy toolkit that I mentioned, that will, you know, show what type of tools you can use, policy tools, that could be incentives, it could be fiscal tools or just other, you know, I guess, development incentive tools, like maybe along in higher densities in certain areas, things like that.
And do you have a sense of some of the obstacles that exist now, or you don't have a?
From what I heard, like, in terms of like multifamily, I think sometimes the fire code, you know, plays a role in that, like needing sprinklers, sometimes it's cost prohibitive. Sometimes it's like single-family lots. There are some sewer taps that need to be relocated, so there's costs associated with that. That's another barrier to developers. In conversations with developers, you know, it's basically, sometimes they just see it easier to develop in the outer-city because, you know, they don't have all these different obstacles to go through in the inner-city, one of them being also like land tenure issues sometimes, you know, there's like the tile is not clear, things like that. So it's just easier, or they see it easier to develop outside of the inner-city. So removing some of those barriers should be a way to start, you know, I guess, encouraging development in the inner-city.
How does your department play a role in helping future development in the downtown housing?
It was definitely part of the comp plan to look at how we're using and reusing our inner-city. And as we're staffing up, that we have long-range planners that can look at some of these proactive ways, we're going to be assisting and partnering with organizations like the Housing Authority that are looking at these issues. You know, one of the biggest components here that we may or may not be able to impact is just the reality of the market here in Laredo. Even though there are a lot of cities of this size and smaller throughout Texas and the country that have seen sort of this redevelopment, what you'll find is that they're part of a metro area that's much larger. And so even though it's a smaller town, it may be a smaller town in the San Antonio area or the Houston area, this process of redevelopment is really a niche. You don't have a lot of big developers in this market. It's smaller home builders, smaller, you know, construction companies that will take on a project like this. Now, in the San Antonio area, with all of those municipalities there, and all those opportunities for older housing and redevelopment, you might find a few companies that have enough that they can jump around. But for us, and Laredo being as far separate as we are, like was brought up, it is easier to develop new raw land, and that's where most of the development is occurring. And I'd be interested just to hear what your guess is. How many homes a year, how many permits a year of residential units are being constructed in Laredo?
You want to ask me?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
My guess?
Yeah. I would say between 5,000 and 10,000.
5,000 and 10,000? In new units? What do you think, Commissioner Vareal?
Multifamily or residential, or single?
Total.
Total?
Units, residential units a year.
Probably right now, given the market that's going on, I would say under 1,000.
Under 1,000? Jerry, do you remember, we looked that number up?
Yeah.
It was about 1,200, wasn't it? 1,200 a year, so.
That was close.
Way off.
So 1,200 units a year, and of those units, if you asked yourself, okay, of all the people in Laredo that are buying a home, how many of those, what percent of those do you think would want to purchase a home downtown? It's not going to be everybody, because some people have families, so what would you say? Of the 100, of the total, what subset, what percent of people do you think are willing to buy a new home downtown?
But Kirby, hold on. I know the point you're trying to make, and I understand that, but I think, when I think of downtown living, I don't think about ownership, I think of rental. And I think that Laredo probably has a very, very high market for people looking to rent. And I think, in my experience with cities with downtowns that have living, there's very little that is available for purchase. I mean, maybe some cities like New York have a lot of purchased property you can purchase because that's, there's no other alternative, there's no other housing in the city other than in highly dense areas. And I know Sebby's, you might be able to speak to this a bit more, but I would imagine that a lot of Laredonans are in the market for renting.
That's true, that's true. But what you see is that the redevelopment market is led by for-sale products, led by somebody that comes in, purchases property, renovates it, and sells them as units. So, but you're right, there is a market though.
But isn't that where, that's where your department's important, right? In other words, you have to propose the incentives to developers so that then they can find a way to make those profitable for themselves, and then that's when they're going to start to develop.
Definitely, we're going to be looking at that. And the study from the Housing Authority is producing is going to be very helpful. But I just want to set kind of a realistic context that if we say it's 5% of the total that would come downtown with those new units, we're talking about 60 units a year. And that's really a niche in terms of, you know, a construction company, a home builder, a developer that's going to focus that attention, that very specific knowledge on one part of downtown. Not impossible, but.
Yeah, but I know it's apples to oranges, but I would say this, like, I think like, if you said 10 years ago, you know, there really should be a food truck park in Laredo. I think people would say, I mean, it's so hot, they're not going to be very popular, Laredonans don't do that. Now we, they're like popping up everywhere, you know what I'm saying? So I guess what I, this is why I wanted to bring this item up, because what I want to make sure we do as a commission and as an extension in your department is not come to it with preconceived conclusions that the housing isn't going to be a big sell, that there can't be a large rental market in the downtown area. I think we can. I mean, the buildings are beautiful. I mean, if you're spending, think about it this way, if you're spending $900 a month in rent for a two-bedroom apartment in Laredo, which is, I think, probably what a two-bedroom apartment costs you in Laredo, I don't know. Do you know, Sebby, what a two-bedroom apartment costs?
The ranges.
Or you would know.
What part of town?
But just on average, just like.
Midtown, maybe around 700, 800, and further north about 900, 10, 1,000.
I think there's at least 1,000 people who would pay $1,200 a month to live downtown Laredo, in the city of 300,000. I think there could be at least 1,200 people. So how many, that's, you know, 1,200 units as compared to like one or two a year?
Okay, that's speculation on your part. So let's listen to Mr. Sebby, he has a lot of experience in downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Juan's already spoken a little bit about it, but part of the objective of the study is to come back with a policy kit that says, these are policies, incentives that have been used, and we charged them with looking at San Antonio, Brownsville, looked at other cities, El Paso. This firms don't work in San Antonio with their reinvestment initiative for, housing reinvestment initiative. So they'll come back very specifically and say, in order to get down, housing in downtown Laredo, you need so much per housing unit. And that's, it's probably a kickstart type policy, because you don't want to do that over the long term, but it's not happening organically. I didn't know what Jerry just shared, three permits in two years. I mean, I kind of had a feeling, but I didn't know it was that dead down here. So ultimately, what's going to drive where we would need your support is invalidating these policies and saying, it's not happening organically, we need to kickstart it. We've shared, in the last couple of years, we've circulated our own, the committee's own version of what a policy kit would look like, and we're talking about doing this, saying, if you want 50 units a year, this is what it's going to take, because developers aren't coming. We have an example right now, the Housing Authority has got a contract on a building downtown, and the environmental is not good. There's substantial remediation that's required on top of an elevator. And then the most important thing that we're seeing, well, one of the most important things where there's cost involved is in infrastructure, the taps. Your fire tap, your water tap, your sewer tap. If that's, in an incentive concept, if the city could contribute all or part of that work, that could also motivate some, the private sector. For the housing authorities, some things are going to be easier, but there are some other things that are going to be harder, right? So for us, we leverage public monies, that's a little easier. For the private sector, they don't have that leverage. If you add a new sewer and water tap, and that's 30,000 between the two, even if you don't have an elevator, they'll say, no, I'm not doing that. We might accept it because we have a mission, right, an affordable housing mission, but the private sector doesn't. The question about rents came up. There is no, you know, we've got about 50% poverty in this area, right next door on the Cuatro, about 48% poverty. So we're not going to be, we're not, we're going to have to pioneer the rents in downtown. What I mean by that is, we're going to have to set that bar. We're, in our redevelopment, and that property we're looking at is about 12,000 square feet. It's looking to bring market housing with maybe one or two low-income units, because what we need down here is not more low income. We're driving that poverty rate up ourselves, got 260 units that are poverty between Hamilton and the senior home. So ultimately, bottom line is, the city will be asked to kickstart the redevelopment. And I think the number, I don't know where Kirby came up with 6,000, it's probably just a number out of the sky, but the letters that we've shared with city management speak about maybe 50 units over the next couple of years. And then, you know, determining whether that can be supported. We don't have a lot of amenities downtown for folks, so it's going to take special effort. Besides that, is, for me, if the taps could be resolved, if you say to a developer, we're going to give you fresh, new taps, that could be encouraging, because they can go get them outside the loop, they are getting them. So that's, yeah. What the city of San Antonio has done is they've allocated recently, and they've gone through an evolution, is they dedicated $10,000 for infrastructure per unit. Right? So that, the developer could use that, basically, they get, they get a contribution to do that. They all, what they also do is the city acquires lots in the inner-city, and the city gets them builder-ready, basically taps, deals with infrastructure and other issues, and then they put them out to the market for developers that are looking to do that. So I'm not one to push too much on the city, because there's roles for the city, but I think here would just be a kickstart role. It wouldn't be, I mean, you don't want to incentivize where you don't need it, but right now, it's pretty obvious that we need it. Not even talking about the commercial sector, we've got no multifamily happening in downtown. So I think you will play a critical role. What Jerry did today for me was validating, I hadn't looked at multifamily downtown in terms of permitting, the detail that he went into and how he did, that was very helpful. Of course, we kind of feel that we've been assuming it. But the policy kit will be very specific, and it'll be, it'll be based on what other cities are doing. So hopefully, that'll be helpful.
What can, what is your study going to be finalized, more or less?
They have a few more weeks, it should be done by end of February. Really, their goal was January 31st. So they may hit, they may hit that mark, and we have them programmed, we actually had them programmed to come make a presentation right after they're done, but since the summit's kind of in the 90-day window, we tell them, well, you can come make a presentation at the summit. The idea with that, and honestly for everybody, is to get ahead of city planning in terms of budgeting and other things that are going to happen that really start in April. But we have a huge lift in the multifamily world to be able to convince, we're going to compete against other things, you know, and that's just our reality, we know that. But start small, maybe 50 is not, maybe it's too much to do 50 in the first year or so, maybe we do less. We're looking at this redevelopment, this project, if it happens, now we have a setback that we just learned about yesterday, or day before, with this environmental, just so you get a sense. This environmental issue will impact about $100,000 to this project. We may do it, because we have a mission, a developer's not going to do that, they turn right back and say, I'm not doing it.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you very much.
I just have a question, one question. So would your study include supplies and saturation of apartments or residential, multifamily, single-family, how many we have in the market, how many are vacant, right, or going to be developed in the next two years, and then the demand, how many people are going to need housing, multifamily and single-family? Because I know there was a study done in 2012, I think Hyde did it, but then it hasn't been done after that.
Yes, actually, they're going to do a market analysis based on income, so we'll be able to do a little bit of, it's not housing needs assessment, which is a little different, but it will be able to forecast what we think is the need based on income.
Okay, whether multi or single-family?
Correct.
Rental or non, or ownership?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's go into the next item, it's item number seven, discussion regarding townhome developments, built examples in Laredo benefits and challenges, possible ordinance amendments to improve the design and overall process.
Okay, we asked the Commissioner Vareal if we could place this on the agenda, because we would like to come in the future to the commission for a recommendation to council to amend the ordinance for townhomes, and we'll explain why. We're going to review the current process for townhouse development and a few of the issues there. We'll share some examples, some challenges, and just generally talk about the opportunities that there are for townhome development, townhouse development. And then we'll talk a little more about what we're proposing. We don't have any specifics now, but part of the reason was to get some feedback from you before we come back with an ordinance for recommendation to council. So one of the issues right now is that the definitions in the code are inadequate. And so when trying to classify a project that might be brought in, it's difficult to fit in, and that will become, the reason that's an issue will become apparent in just a second. But as you can see, there's no, it's not, the term is not townhome, it's actually townhouse in our, in our ordinance. We have two definitions which provide some confusion about what it may be that we're referring to when we refer to a townhouse. So under this definition, a duplex would be considered a townhouse. And so we can't distinguish those, someone could have a duplex project that would be considered a townhouse project. So our definitions need to be, they need to be better, they need to be more specific to avoid any confusion. Now, right now, the zones that are approved for a townhouse, we have several that are as-of-right, those are a couple residential and then several commercial districts. And then we have a couple zones residential that are approved with special use permits. Now, do you ever see townhouses? Well, I guess you wouldn't. If they, if they're as-of-right, you wouldn't see them. But what you do see is that they come through the SUP, through the special use permit process. So if someone wants to build townhouses, they're not building them unless they're coming in for an SUP. And the reason is because currently, there is no, there is no guidance in the ordinance on how a townhouse project can be developed. So what they do is they come to the planning commission, and then they want to adjust those recommendations using a special use permit. Now, that creates a challenge, because the special use permit, as it's written in the ordinance, does not change the zoning on the land, but establishes a permit for a specific use with an approved plan. So in other words, if somebody brings an SUP in, they should not be using that SUP So in other words, if somebody brings an SUP in, they should not be using that SUP to go lower than what the ordinance requires. You can apply conditions that are more strict, but you can't use the SUP to take away or to ignore rules that are already there. And that's what's, that's what's taken place in the past. We have, we have width requirements that have been ignored through an SUP process, and according to our own ordinance, we're not allowed to do that, but we've done that in the past. And so what they should be coming in, if we use an SUP process, it's just to approve that a use can be used in a certain zone. In the subdivision ordinance, we have restriction on lot sizes, so the reason someone comes in for an SUP is because, if it worked the way the ordinance was written, an applicant would come in for a special use permit to say, can I build townhomes in this zone? And the planning commission would say, yes. So that allows them to build it, and then the rules for a townhouse would still apply with the underlying. So because we don't have something in the ordinance that says, okay, if you, if the planning commission says yes to a townhome, then don't apply these underlying rules to the zone, apply these new rules specifically for townhouses. We don't have those new rules for townhouses. So what they do is, because we have the underlying rules for the zone, they ask in the SUP that you apply some conditions to let them make it this, or, you know, or change around the design, something that fits them. What that does for the city is it, we don't get consistent development when it comes to townhouses, and it creates, it creates issues. So let's take a little tour, let's visit just one or two, and if you want to, we can take it, we can take a look at additional ones. If you want to, you can take over on that. So we'll... Some of the issues that we've had with townhouses, and we sat down as staff, we've also sat down with developers and builders, we want to do that additionally. If we come back with a recommendation for you, we want to come back and actually have input more from both staff and from developers and builders who are looking at this. Some of the issues we've had are with lot widths. You know, townhouses as a product, the reason, you pointed this out, Commissioner Golday last time, or one of the previous times, the reason that's more popular than condos is because as a forced-out product, it's a lot easier to finance a townhouse than it is a condo. And so builders want to build a product that is placed on its own land so that they can sell it and get financed easier that way. There's more customers looking for the product than there would be a customer looking for a condo. What happens, though, to keep it affordable, to match a certain price, they're making these things skinnier and skinnier, or the width smaller and smaller. Because of that, it creates some challenges. Where do we put the utility meters in the front? Oftentimes, cars park on top of those, and utilities aren't able to be checked, or the radar that we have can't read because the car's on top of it. Because the widths get so short, we can't use off-street parking anymore because the homes, the driveways are so close together. So what we end up doing is red-curbing the whole thing. Why don't you go to the example first of where we've had some challenges? And so then we're red-curbing the entire townhouse development, and then, who do you think they call when there's parking issues? Do they call the developer? No, they call the city to come enforce. So there's an expense there, there's an issue there with enforcement that we've got to come back to. It also creates a safety concern for fire trucks that often are trying to maneuver a street that, whose width is shorter than oftentimes a public. So this is a recent development, the Escondida Townhouses. You can see this example here, the driveways are spaced in a way that did not allow for off-street parking, and so the whole thing was red-curbed. I don't know if you can see that there. And that creates a challenge with, people as we know typically have two to three cars. And so one, there's one of many solutions we can look at. One we're looking at for townhouses is that driveways be conjoined with two adjacent. So that way, they're spaced in a way, so see how there's that little space between those two, if you go back? We would set it up in a way so that they're conjoined so that we maximize the amount of parking space that would be on streets, so that we don't have to red曲ve them. And there's also, if we could zoom in, you can't, but you'd see that here we have issues as well with where the utilities are placed, because they're, all the utilities are in the front, but based on the width here, it doesn't give us enough, it doesn't give us enough space to place the utilities in a way that would be effective. Now, as a product, I understand these have been very popular because they're hitting a price point that's very hard to meet with single-family detached housing. So these are great, these have been great developments, they're built to good quality, it's just there's some design elements that make it very challenging when they're built for the people that live there, and then for the city as well. But let's look at a good example from an older, one of the design things that we're looking at implementing, where you might have a, it would allow a developer to decrease the widths, is if they provided an alley in the back. And then that way, you could space out the meters, some in front, some in back, you could put, you could put the garage in back, so it doesn't have to be as well in the front.
They're going to have to be priced higher, you know that, right?
Yes, but it gives an option. We wouldn't require it, but we would provide an option that you could, you could shrink the widths if you're being able to allow an alley. That's just one option we're looking at, it's not the direction we necessarily have to go. Yeah, we don't have to go too in-depth on all of it, we will share this link with you, and if you want, you can explore some of the townhome developments as well for yourself. So like I mentioned, there's multiple definitions which lack clarity. It's approved as-of-right in some zones, but for others, they have to come through SUP. There's some design issues, and then you've got the SUP process, which slows down, adds time to projects. What we would like to do is make townhome development as-of-right, so they don't have to come through for an SUP through planning commission and council. What we would like to do, that is the case with other types of development, we would like to make it approved with a site plan that comes to planning commission. But they don't have to go to council for any final approval and wait an additional month or more for a first and second reading. Instead, they would just come to planning commission with a site plan, you would still get approval to say, yes, this looks good. Once they've got their approved site plan, boom, they're in business, they can go. So it would save them time, and it could be as-of-right everywhere in the city. And like I said, we want to sit down and talk more with all the departments, but we definitely want to sit down as well with the developers and home builders who do, who build this product, make sure we're not suggesting something, something that is unreasonable. But we do need to have standards that are consistent that eliminate some of the issues that we've seen. Otherwise, what's going to continue is, you'll see applicants bring you townhouse developments through an SUP process, asking you to kind of bend the rules or go lower than the recommendations of staff, and then it's staff versus them every time, without you having a time to really look at the issues and consider them in depth. We're asking you to consider them in depth once, apply them across the board, and then make it easier for the approval process. And there's one slide that's not included in here, and that is, I would just ask that if this is the direction you would like to go, that you, that you either, that you wait to approve additional SUPs that might become between we get, between now and between when we adopt or amend the ordinance, that you wait on adopting those until we have some guidelines. That doesn't mean you have to wait till we adopt the ordinance, but once we have some established guidelines, then you can apply them to the SUP that might come in in the next month or two for the projects that are, that would be pending, because we know a few are in the pipeline coming your way. We don't want to slow those down too much.
Very good. Small, just, I would like to see the possibility of allowing townhomes from before. I know it's only B3 is allowed there, but if we're making some changes and some adjustments to the ordinance, there might be some development that they might have commercial, one lot where they can have commercial, in some areas, they might have townhomes. So just look at the possibility, I would really like to see that. That was a comment. Anybody else have any comments? All right, thank you very much. Next item that we have is a public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance map for the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 1, Block 813 Eastern Division, located at 420 North Meadow Avenue from B1 to B3. Mr. Director.
Thank you. You'll notice today, we have a slightly different format change for our presentation, and this is how we like to proceed forward. At the end of this, when we have director's comments, I'd like to get some of your feedback on how we did this. Future, it'll be my staff that'll be presenting, or I'm going to present all these today. So this agenda is agenda minus eight A, it's a public hearing and recommendation of an ordinance for Zone Case 15, 2020. The applicant is Mr. Beranovi, and he's the owner applicant. This is a 15, a .15 acre lot located at 420 North Meadow Avenue. They're requesting to go from B1, which is limited business district, to B3, which is a community business district designation. And the proposed use is a used car lot. As of today, the letters of support are zero, in support, zero against. Just so you can see kind of a general location, this is in where 420 North Meadow Avenue is This is a zoom-in of the property. There, it looks like there are two lots, we'll show you the street view from this, but it's actually located on one lot, there's two, two residential structures located on one lot. From the corner, you can...
Can you go back one, to the first slide? The one side right before. Okay. Thank you.
This is just south of the heights, right? So you can see from the corner, you can see that first residential structure on the corner, and then the one that is behind it, these are all in the same lot, but this is the second residential unit. Here's a view of the current zoning. The pink is B1, so that's the limited business district. And you can see that there's another B3 on the neighboring block. And then the brown is R3, which is, which is the smaller lot, smaller lot residential. And then here's a view of the future land use map. You can see that this area is designated neighborhood mixed use. Neighborhood mixed use allows for, the intent is that we see a mix of businesses in residential. So our staff recommendation is supporting this zone change. The proposed B3 zone complies with the future land use map, it's compatible with a mix of uses that you can see in the area if you head down that corridor, and the property complies with the minimum lot widths required for the new zone. And this would be the proposed motion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Yes, Chairman. Are they going to demolish these structures to, for the car lot? Or what are they going to do with that? Because I see that they, it's residential, and do they have a plan as to what they're going to build, what type of office, parking, or display they're going to have?
The applicant has not decided on how they're going to accomplish this, but they wanted to ensure that they had the proper zoning for the use that they're proposing. They didn't present any specific plan as how they're going to do it.
So why would we want to change it to a B3? We don't really know what they're going to do.
No, the proposed use is a used, the car lot, used car lot. That's the reason that they're using for the zone change. Remember, if the zone change happens, we're not going to hold them to that use, but any use can be brought into this property that it's allowed on a B3.
I think, to clarify this, let me just clarify a little bit. Basically, this is a zoning matter, okay? What they're asking you for is, I want this zone because this is what I'm proposing to do in the future. How they do it then becomes an issue of building problems. Okay? So the use of the land is what they're asking you for, for that particular use.
Thank you, Chairman, and I understand that clearly. It's just that, once we change the B3, see, they can do other...
Anything that's in a B3, that's correct.
See, and so if they're saying it's going to be a used car lot, okay, so are they going to demolish those structures? And if they're not, and we allow it, then are they going to have the cars for sale on the, on the street, or on the driveway, of the houses?
Again, that now becomes an enforcement issue in the city of Laredo. I mean, obviously, any business has to be within their own property lines, and it must meet the guidelines of whatever the land development code has for that particular type of business. If they don't, then it becomes an enforcement issue. That's really what it is. At this point, that's what they ask for, that's the proposed use, but you're right. If you change the zone, there is a whole slew of things that can be done. Now, is this in the best interest of this whole area? Well, Meadow is a high-traffic area, you know? Being a high-traffic area, it's really, really probably a transitional street between commercial and some mixed residential.
I'm more concerned with the residential that we have around there. See, where's the one?
Oh, yeah.
The, I don't have a problem with the B3, see? But it's being brought before us without any knowledge, actually without any plan. We've seen it before, that they ask for a zone change, this is, this is what we're going to build for, so we can have an idea of what's going to happen. What we see, I see a house with a brand-new roof in there, are they going to break it down? Are they going to go ahead and change? Is the owner here? Is the person requesting?
I don't know. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Se puede presentar para...
No le hace, pásale y hablamos en español.
But there's nothing that's prohibiting it as from not doing it. I mean, it's, they comply with...
Tu nombre para el archivo, por favor.
Manuel Santos.
Okay. La pregunta es... Santos, usted está pidiendo cambiar la zona porque va a tener un lot de... La pregunta mía es, ¿qué van a hacer con las casas que están aquí?
Mira, ahí si la ves, hay una casa enfrente y una atrás, ¿no? O sea, la casa de enfrente se quitaría y se quedaría la casa de atrás, que esa se usaría como oficina. Y toda la parte de enfrente, la que está por, la que da para Meadow, ese pavimento, se seguir, todo lo que nos piden para poder, para arreglar el, este, pues la calle, perdón, toda la propiedad, se arregla la propiedad de la esquina para frente y se hace lo que, se hacen los locales, para poder poner los carros en la esquina. Pero es que como tiene dos casas, la de enfrente se quita y la de atrás se queda.
That's exactly...
Muchas gracias. Y de ahí, pues hay varios lotes ahí en esa calle.
Yo sé. Mi pregunta era nada más, ¿qué iban a hacer con esas casas?
Pues se quitaría, una se quedaría y la otra se quitaría.
Gracias. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that.
All right, what are the wishes of the question? Public motion, feel free. Approve. Do we have a second? And a second, all those in favor? Those against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is going to be item 8B. Item 8B is a public hearing, amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately 7.76 acres, located east of I-35 and west of Springfield Avenue from B4 to R1B. Mr. Kirby Snitman, you're on.
Yes, sir. The applicant is Andrew Brittingham with TDB Land Holdings, and also Ricardo Envidial, who's his representative. Property, as you described, is 7.76 acre tract of land located east of I-35 and west of Springfield Avenue, going from a B4 highway commercial district, proposing an R1B, single-family high-end city residential district, proposed use is residential. As of today, there was one letter of support and one letter against. This is where the tract of land is located, east of I-35, right there at the end of Springfield. Here's a zoom-in showing the property lines, right there at the end of Springfield. There's a drawing from the engineer, showing some of the dimensions, and another view looking southeast, looking southwest, and a street view from the end of Springfield The current zoning for the property is B4, and you can see that adjacent to it is R1A to the north, Adland to the east, which will likely become, as the rest of the area is residential. And R1 to the south, B3 directly to the south along with it. So it's really a mix, but there is a fair amount of residential already in the area. And the future land use map, which shows, again, the mixed-use center designation for the future land use, which would include, which would allow us to encourage both residential and life business.
It's a...
So staff recommendation is to support the zone change, because the proposed R1B zone complies with the future land use map designation as a mixed-use center, and that the proposed zoning and use is compatible with the uses that are already in the general area. And this is the proposed motion.
Very good, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor? Very good, thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor?
Mr. Chairman, Ricardo Villarreal, how in engineering here, the representative for the client. Here to speak in favor and answer any questions that you all may have.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, real quick.
Yes, sir.
And, and it goes back to, to the fact that we changed, Mr. Villarreal, a, a piece of, of, of land to an R1B. And I see that we have an access road on it. But wouldn't have any description as to how many lots we're going to have there? How we're going to impact the community, how we're going to access? And I know exactly, it's, it's a zone change, okay? Because everybody's going to say, well, it's only a zone change. But again, we're placing R1B, which is going to be small lots in there. And we don't even, I don't have a clue as to how many R1s in there. How we're going to enter acres, exit out of that particularly.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm not going to make it long, but I would like to see, when this type of changes occur, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see something. I'm sure that Mr. Villarreal already has an idea what they're going to do there, at least what they're going to propose. So I would like to see something like that when we have a zone change that is being impacted without any access in and out. That was my, my comment.
Yes.
I don't, I don't expect the-
No, no, that's, that's a very good, very good comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There, a little backtrack. We met with the planning department because exactly what the planning director just spoke of on the second item of the agenda. To bring in an amendment of the ordinance to include townhomes, garden homes, that type of development. This originally was planned for a garden home, townhome development. However, the parameters for a townhome and a garden home development aren't in the ordinance as we would like them to be, to make them efficient. So what we had to do is, we had, if there was a rezone for a garden home development, we'd be rezoning for a garden home development. There would be about 60 garden, lots. This development has already been approved preliminary in the last meeting, June, January 2nd. Where it was already approved preliminary, we're coming with the, the rezone right behind it. We had to go R1B because of what I just spoke of. Which is good in a way, because we meet bigger setbacks, both in the front and the back, as well as on the side. So we meet, we're, we're going based off of the entire ordinance of an R1B. And not just applying for an SUP which the planning department wants to kind of get away from, the way it was done before. And I know it looks very high-density, which, which an R1B is. But it matches best for a garden home development like you see around town.
That was my question.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? And, and Rafael here with the planning department is helping me out. We're just going to bring up the, the previous drawing, just so you can see and, and get the verification of how it's going to look.
It doesn't have dimensions on the previous, I mean, I, I, that was a master plan that-
No, the actual plat, the plat has dimensions. I believe they're 35 by 80, 90, around there. So 3,500 square foot lots. Now, recently, you do see developments around town that are smaller than that for townhomes. We tried looking at a different avenue, tried dissecting the ordinance. Tried to come up with some idea, either through a special use permit, conditional use permit. But at the end, in the interim, while this amendment gets fixed and gets, gets kind of revamped. This was the route that we, that we had to go. So that's the, that they were, thank you.
So width of that road?
The width is a city road, 50-foot right-of-way, 31-foot back-to-back. So it'll be public, it's not going to be a private road that'll be narrower, that you usually see, and usually 20-foot. As as per city standards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change?
Hello.
Hi.
By introduction, my name is Arun Fosantos. I, I own a acre tract that's right south of this land track. I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty much of the opinion of Mr. Mendez here, where, where we don't have enough information. You know, lots are getting smaller and, and smaller, and there's no specifics as, as to what is permitted here. So I, I would like to vote against, until, until we have more information.
Okay. Can you repeat how many lots would be on there, you had the plat, can you put that back on? That there gave you the information.
63. 63.
Okay, 63 single? 63 lots.
You know, as, as of late, I've been, I'm, I am a former appraiser, you know, so I've been through this thing a lot. You know, and I, I just, I, I would have to see a, a lot with a possible home on it, so I can envision it. At, at this time, it's premature. And I, I would suggest we wait until we can get a model of, of, of what it's going to look like.
I have a question for you, are, are you concerned with the way the houses are going to look?
I'm sorry?
Are you, are you concerned with how the homes will look?
No, I, I have a lot of trouble with density. You know, I, I've been in some residential areas that there's a lot of parking on the street and the sidewalks and stuff. And that's just, it's, it's, it's going to make for a negative impact on value. And trying to avoid-
On the value to your property?
Of everything.
The whole area?
This is in North Laredo.
Yeah.
This is not mine's road or South Laredo.
Yeah. Okay, let me ask you this, Kirby, can you, is there a photo of the area? Can we go back to the ones that have the photo of the area? But it lots, but to the south.
This photo or the area?
Okay, yeah, that's, that's where it would be.
The 3,500 square foot lots. The R1As are 4,500. Now they shrank another thousand feet, square feet.
These are what, garden homes, proposed?
There, there, there could be a garden home.
There's garden homes and plantations, and that's how that is.
Will they have garages? Will they have, you know, we don't know anything.
We don't know.
Are they all going to park in the street? Is there going to be enough?
It's too experimental.
3,500 square feet lots, and there are 35, what did he say, 35 frontage by 80-something?
Is it the frontage 35 feet, 35 feet frontage?
No, the, the frontage requirements, we'll look those up. But there are requirements for the lot width, there are parking requirements for single-family residential.
35 feet is, are you going for two cars?
There's no lawn then?
35.
35 is, is plenty of space for two cars to be front, you could actually put four.
It's going to be a parking lot, there's not going to be no lawns. It's just too small. It's going to be, we've drove around other neighborhoods that are, like Las Bisas, those are 6,000 square feet. And those are cluttered. Can't, I hate to see 3,500. R1A is 4,500, that's like Los Presidentes. If you ever drive around those, everybody's parked in the street.
Actually, 4,000 to 6,000.
Right. These are 3,500. It's just so you, you'll be aware of it. We're just, and we have the property right south of it, as you can see there in the-
What, what?
The, the yellow one.
Okay, if I can.
We're right south of it.
Okay.
I see.
And it's going to affect the timeline on our property.
I, I would just like to see a model of it, if it's possible, you know, because I-
The type of home they're going to build, or-
The townhome.
It's going to have a garage, it's going to have carports, what it's going to have, you know? More specifics.
Great. Thank you.
It's pretty much it.
All we have to say. Thank you.
Alright, anybody else who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change?
Can I ask you a question, Kirby? What's your, what's, what's your all's position on why you support it?
As we stated before, it complies with the future land use, and there's a mix of residential already in the area. In terms of the, the lot size, that is the way that the market is moving, more towards with the cost of land. Doesn't necessarily mean that the home is going to be any less quality because the lot is smaller. It's just the price of land dictates that the lots are getting smaller over time. And to me, that's not a, a, that doesn't correlate necessarily with the quality of the home that you're going to see.
Let me add something that kind of gives a- This is part of the Antler Crossing development, which you can go out and see phase one already completed. The idea that the developer had was to introduce a product that helps you get into your home. So when you have a townhome development like this, either by purchase or for rent. They are also a home builder as well. They're part of the B&amp;B Homes development, so TDB and B&amp;B, even though they're not the same entity. They're the same people developing, which you can see the type of homes that B&amp;B builds. They bought this entire tract, as, as, pretty sure the commission knows, the audience didn't know. So they're fully invested in this entire development. I will say that the idea is for certain amount of people that maybe can't start up on a 300, 250, $300,000 home. That can come into the same place and kind of move their way up and build that rapport either through credit or, you know, through whatever means possible. So they're offering this type of development to kind of use as a stepping stone. It will be nice, it will have driveways, it'll meet parking requirements. I can't exactly provide a model of it yet, because that gets determined on what happens here. So it, it's kind of like the next step. However, when it goes to building permit, all that can be, can be discussed as well at that point. But that's, that's the idea, same developer as the people up north, and they do provide a good product.
Alright. Okay.
I make a motion to the president. Comment? And I support the motion.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second. And a second, all those in favor? Aye. Those against? Motion carries, thank you. Next item that we have is a public hearing and preliminary consideration of replat of Lot 10 in east, one half of Lot 11. Lot 922, Eastern Division into Lot 10A, Block 922, Eastern Division. The purpose of the replat is to combine Lot 10 and the east one-half of Lot 11. Yes, sir.
Yes, so the applicant is Mr. Francisco Reyes. The engineer is Daniel Gomez Engineering. It's a 8,900 square foot tract located north of Cortez and west of Mendiola Avenue. The current zoning is R1, the proposed use is residential, and as you stated, purpose is to find two lots to increase the buildable, the buildable area. As of today, one letter of support, zero against. Here is a location map showing you the general area in the city it's located, again, just south of the heights. A zoom in of the two lots, as you can see that they want to join together. A street view showing you those, current state of the lots. And a zoom in of the plat, of the replat, showing you on the left, the existing plat, and on the right, the replat. Where the two lots will be combined. Staff comments, there were only comments from the planning department. And all other departments have no comments submitted. And the, here's the proposed motion.
Alright, we have the developer or the engineer for the plat, yes?
Good evening, I'm Daniel Gomez, the engineer doing the replat. And we concur with all of the comments.
Comments? Very good, thank you. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion to approve? Second. We have a motion in the second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And the motion that we're approving is exactly what is proposed. Alright, the next item is the-
Chairman, can I make a motion, I hear three items at once?
No.
No, there's a reason for that.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah. We're going to take item, this is 11A. Final consideration of the replat of Lot 4, 5, and 6, Block 1087, Eastern Division. Situated in City of Laredo, and this is a 23.15 feet of unplatted portion of Lot 4, Block 1087. Into Lot 6A, Block 1087, Eastern Division, intended as commercial. It's a final plat, so, do I hear a motion?
Motion, so.
Motion in the second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries, alright. The next item that we have is the item B, 11B. Final consideration of the replat of Lot 3A, Block 1, Larry Farm Subdivision. Unit 1 into Lots 5A and 6A, Block 1, Larry Farm Subdivision. Intent is a fast-food restaurant. Do I have a motion?
Oh, I move to approve that.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second. And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving into item 12.
Chairman, before you read the, the item, I will, by direction, I will abstain from voting on this item.
You're familiar with the-
Yes, I am, familiar with this particular case. And I, I can't, and at that point, we don't have a quorum. We can no longer proceed with taking action on this item, since we don't have a quorum. So, just have to bring it back to the next meeting, that's all we can do. The, I don't know if there's any director's comments?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Well, first of all, how did you like the new format? Is there anything you'd like us to change? Was it helpful, was it, was it not helpful? What does that come?
Go right ahead. I, I liked half of it, but I hated the other half. The part I hated was being read to the stuff in the front end. I like better to be able to scroll to the item ahead of time, and I can look through it and kind of consider it. You know, if I'm zoning on something, so the reading of it, I think that's not necessary. I think what is necessary, though, is helpful, is if there's a particular thing that needs to be explained or discussed, to be, to do it that way. But I think the first part was probably not necessary.
Well, for the public record, it is. Well, it is.
Our thinking was, not, for, for you, that probably comes prepared, but for the public, often there is confusion, or there's a lack of context. And so often, they come up and give comments that maybe are irrelevant, or that they need addressed, because we didn't, it's, it's in, it's in the staff report, but we didn't read it out. So they're like, well, who owns this, or who did, there are questions that we can briefly answer if we just go over it. That can serve to minimize the confusion, and also sometimes minimize the time we take when there are comments.
Well, I, I think it is important for, for the staff to make the presentation of each one of the different items. I mean, you are all the ones putting them together, and for us, it's a lot easier for you to be able to present what you put together. We can read them, like Carlos said, very easily. But I think for the general public, it is very important. The way it was conducted today is the way a planning and zoning commission meeting should be run. Because that way, the public is totally aware of what's going on. Your presentations were excellent, they were succinct, but to the point where everything was addressed. So I, this is a format that has to be utilized. Any other comments?
Real quick, Mr. Chairman. I don't doubt the expertise of, of staff. I have great respect for all of them, I know all of them. And, but some of the items, we get the public to make comments, actually make calls, and say, well, why is this, why is that? We had an, an item where this couple actually were, made a comment that, against it. And was that being affected them? It was, it wasn't going to affect them, see? It was just, they just came to oppose the item, and it wasn't going to affect them, see? So, the, when I, when I asked for, for the, for the plat, it was more so they kept, because this, this is being viewed by the public. So the public, I couldn't see what it is. Developers, they come and they, they bring and try to make smaller lots, because they would make more, more, more houses, and try to increase their, their profits, which are probably that. So it was not, I, my comments were never pointed to a staff, I want to make that clear. Actually, it was more information, I would like to have more information. That was my comment, Mr. Chairman.
I think, Kirby, it was a very good presentation. I think the model that you devised to make these presentations is good.
Yes.
I mean, as we go through it, you know, I'm sure maybe some things may be refined as we continue to go through it. But I think it was very, very informational for everyone that was here present. So I think this is a format that we need to follow. I don't know how the rest of the commission members feel.
I agree, thank you, Kirby. Thank you.
Okay, we will, we will not get in the, we don't want it to be lengthy, we want it to stay a few minutes. So if there's a lot of information-
So if there's a lot of information, we'll try to summarize. We won't, necessarily won't have to read everything, and that's fluid. If you want us to change the format going forward, you just let us know.
Because I think, like, part of it is redundancy, right? Like, he's already announced what is the property, when he's giving you the agenda item, and then you repeat it, we don't even hear that again.
Okay, yeah, that's a-
That's a point, that's a good point. You don't have to be redundant, I already read the description of what's going on, you just need to explain the process now.
I guess just who the applicant is, and then get to the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, go right ahead.
Do you think it'd be necessary, because I know a lot of times when we vote, sometimes the audience member don't understand whether it passed or did not pass. Do you think that's something else that you could possibly add in your direction, where you could say, zone change has now been passed or has not been passed? So at least they know what's going on. Sometimes I can notice there's a little confusion, they're not too sure what happened or what was just decided, whether it was passed or not passed.
Sometimes they're like, your highlights are-
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't know what-
What's just happened.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, that one's a little, that one might be a little awkward.
Especially if it's passed.
In how we're doing.
Maybe you could have a staff member just kind of like, you know, whoever was handling the case, if you recognize whoever that person is, especially if they're not very fluid in English, is reach out to them.
And especially with the next sentence, I guess.
Either it got approved or it didn't get approved.
That is a good practice that we're sitting down tomorrow to review how this went today, because it'll be my staff that is implementing this, making the presentation. That's something we'll bring up tomorrow, is how can we be, how can we be aware of the applicants or the people who are here, and one of us always try to reach out and explain, especially in Spanish for those that don't speak English to say. So that's very good advice going forward.
Thank you. So just my follow-up, I still also want us to have the packet here, because sometimes I wanna make a counterpoint or attack somewhat.
Well, how was the packet not here?
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't pull it up.
Okay, sorry about that. That was not intentional.
I had to tell you to move it back.
That wasn't intentional.
It's here too? I didn't find, I couldn't find it.
Oh, the presentation or the-
Yeah, well, the presentation had, like, you were presenting the map, right? So I wanna be able to, I wanna go back to the map and say, okay, wait a minute, Kirby, you're wrong because, well, Kirby, you're right because- The usual there is what we have here, yeah.
Okay, I see. So what we're gonna try to do in the future is, we have enough time, now, you may not see this at first, because we're gonna be getting used to this, but that presentation is gonna be in the staff report.
Especially the site plan with the aerials and stuff like that, yeah. I want all the backup, because maybe you're on a slide that I don't wanna be on. That's a good point, but yeah, because I was trying to put that same aerial, and I couldn't find it. But don't take that to be anything less than, I love you guys.
Thank you. No, we are very, we have a great relationship with the planning, we very much enjoy working with you, and we don't feel like, you know, ever being hard on us. We want, this is your planning commission, we're here to serve you, we wanna do a good job. When we get to the point where we're good at putting these presentations together, we're gonna do them early enough that they can be published in the packet, so that in addition to the normal staff report, you'll see our presentations there as well.
Very good. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.